All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome to a school board meeting for August 25th, 2020. We really have one agenda item, which is our annual meeting. And so you guys can't, you guys can see me, but the rest of the board is here, sitting with me here at the high school. And so the hope is that we're gonna be able to manage a online and in-person meeting tonight. I'm gonna ask that everybody give us a little bit of patience. This is the first time we've done this, and so there might be a few pickups, but we're gonna do the best we can. The first item on our agenda is the election of an annual meeting chairperson. So I will take a nomination or nominations. If you're interested in nominating somebody and you're, you've called in, you can unmute yourself and do that as well.
Yeah, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, so we have one nomination for Abby Fowler. Sarah McAnity, what would you like to say?
If you have a nomination, that's fine. I would nominate Abby as well.
Oh, thank you. Any other nominations? Yeah, so then I will take a second. Sarah, can you be the second?
Yes, I second.
Thank you. Alright, so all in favor of nominating Abby Fowler as our chairperson for our 2020 annual meeting, say aye. Or aye, and then, I don't know how you're doing this, Mickey, virtually?
Have to ask people for if they want to say aye, they're going to have to unmute themselves, which means you'd have to press star six and unmute. A little odd for today, so if you press star six and unmute yourself, and then we'll give it a second here, Peru, and if you want to then ask for the vote again, throw that rope.
Okay, so I'll give you a second to unmute yourself if you'd like to vote. And if you would, the nomination and the second is for Abby Fowler, your chairperson. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. No, alright, hearing none. Thank you all for voting. I am going to turn this over to Abby Fowler. Thank you.
Am I said it pretty well? We will start with our motion to approve the agenda. Do we have someone to make that motion? Do we have a second? And your name first and last, please. Thank you. All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Those online?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Anyone online opposed? The motion carries. At this time, we will introduce the Board of Education. The president is Paru Shaw. Vice President Hillary DeBloyce. Treasurer Pablo Muirhead. Clerk is Emily Berry. And member Clark Warren. Next, we'll move to motion to approve minutes of the 2019 annual meeting. Could I get someone to approve the motion? First and last name, please. Thank you. Can I get a second?
Amy Miller, second.
Amy Miller. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone in person or online opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have motion to recess annual meeting for the purpose of convening the budget hearing. Can I get a motion? And could I get a second, either in person or online, please? And if I could get in person and online to have the motion approved. Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? And that motion carries. At this time, I will turn it over for the State of the District report. Brian Davis.
Well, thank you, Abby. I appreciate, appreciate that, and welcome to everybody here in the House tonight, and also people that are at home joining us. So we certainly know it's gonna be a unique school year, and so we're starting it out with a unique annual meeting, so doing the best, best that we can. So we appreciate your attendance. So tonight, I'd like to walk through what we call a State of the District address, and that'll be followed by a budget hearing by our interim director, Roger Dixon. So as we get started tonight, again, we want to Yeah, I thought it did. Alright, we could just have a second here. Got it. Alright, how's that? Excellent. Alright, so let's, let's reset, and I appreciate the grace to be able to work through this. So, so starting with the State of the District for the 2020-2021 school year, again, continuing to focus on our, our work around equity, growth, and excellence for all. So things I wanted to be able to cover tonight would include our vision for 2025. We're about halfway through that vision that was passed in 2015. Some achievements from this past school year. The strategic framework, which was developed with a, with a large community group, setting our, our tone for the next five years. Discuss a little bit of the school reopening plan that we had worked through this summer, and then just give a slight update on our facilities referendum that we have going on. So it's certainly been an active time, and I wanted to be able to provide a highlight of where we are on these areas. So starting with our vision, again, to come back to, back in February of 2016, we had over 100 community members that gathered to provide a vision for our future. And the, the statement that that group had come up with, and that was community members, parents, students that were involved and staff in that process, was the Shorewood School District will foster a positive educational experience that is responsive to the diverse needs and aspirations of all students. So from that statement back in 2016, the school board memorialized that statement as school board policies, student results policies that we are held accountable to on an annual basis and monitor regularly. So those results policies are academic mastery, character and citizenship, and wellness. Some of the highlights from this past school year include our rating on the Department of Public Instruction report card. That would be our district-wide rating, which was significantly exceeds expectations. That measures math and English language art, both our achievement, which is great, but what we also focus on is our ability to grow, so how are we seeing growth over time? And also closing our achievement gaps. We also, in that, in the DPI report card, are also proud to report that our high school was a top-five high school in the state of Wisconsin, getting a 91.8 rating, which also was significantly exceeds expectations. So congratulations to everyone involved at that level. And really, that's a, that's a mark of a strong system, as we would have our, our high school being that successful. We also had a, a successful accomplishment with the class of 2020 that just graduated a couple weeks ago. We had our highest overall ACT scores with all students participating, which has been since 2015, achieving 23.5. So that's the highest in, in school history, and again, really proud of our students and staff for all the work that goes into that. Outside of the classroom, I had a very successful sports seasons, although cut a little bit short in the spring. We were named the medium-sized school champions in the Wisconsin Sports Network Cup. We're the first public school to win those medium-sized schools, bringing home state championships in girls' cross country and boys' soccer. So some great accomplishments outside of the classroom, and we know that those are areas where kids build, when we're talking about characteristics of, of character and citizenship and wellness, a lot of those areas are fostered in our co-curricular activities, in particular, our sports arena. So congratulations to everyone who participated in that last year. And then we also were able to move forward with our partnership with Children's Hospital, focused on wellness, and implemented our mental health and wellness services in each high, in each school. So each school had an opportunity to have a counselor who was available for students, and then also a partnership with staff to be able to refine our skills around mental health and wellness in our classrooms. So that's a really unique opportunity that we had, that we launched last year, that will continue moving forward. But those are some of the highlights from last year that I wanted to bring up. But as I mentioned with the athletics, we also know that some of our measurements are not necessarily inside our classroom walls. And one of the students that I'm the most proud of, as we're moving forward in, in our work, is around, is Bella Busby, who's with us tonight. And I want to talk about her work in the frame on character and citizenship. So again, some of this work is, is some work that happens outside of the classroom. And Bella was active, had a very active summer this year, and was, was part of some of our activities as an activist around the community. So you can see here, this was probably one of the most moving, more moving pictures that I've seen for a long time, and, and some of the work that our students have been able to do. And this was a scene from a situation that Bella had gracefully navigated through at a Neil for Nine event, which was right after the murder of George Floyd, and that was in Shorewood. And there you can see, you know, certainly the grace under fire that Bella is showing, and the leadership that we really try to foster with all of our students, and to see that manifested in that, in that activity was, was great. And so also Bella participated in that weekend and in the Black Lives Matter march, which many of our students led. You can see Bella right there in the middle. And so, so I'd like to invite Bella up tonight, just to speak to, just quickly, just her experiences and share anything with the community that she has. So Bella?
Hi. Over the summer, I've become very active in the wake of the Black Lives Matter movement. Going to protests, talking at those protests, and learning what it means to be a black kid in America. I march for all the black people who are unjustly murdered at the hands of police. It's, it's really important to me, because that could easily be me or my brother on the news. Now, I'm putting my efforts towards fixing the school curriculum, so that all of my white classmates understand why black people matter.
Thank you, Bella, so much for your, for your leadership, and so Bella's a rising freshman, so we will have her in the auditorium many times coming up, so thank you so much. So to, to, to that end, in, in using Bella's leadership, leadership of many of our students and community members, we had an opportunity to develop a strategic framework this past school year. So as I mentioned earlier, our, our visioning process took place in 2015, 2016, is projecting to what we want to be in 2025. So the halfway mark being 2020, I wanted an opportunity to recalibrate and, and refresh our visioning process. So between October and March of last year, we held a strategic framework session, and really focused on a lot of the discrepancies and issues that Bella just spoke to, related, related to things like social justice, anti-racist pedagogy in our schools, and also addressing the fear with teachers, administrators, and district leaders around leadership and, and a lot of this work. So we were able to partner with Umbuntu, so Dr. Monique Liston facilitated for us. And we had, I think, over 50 community members participate on a regular basis between October and March. Fortunately, we finished up on March 4th, which was important in the 2020 scheme of things, to be able to wrap up in person. But our work was really around looking at, a deep look at our systems, and what improvements can we make at our systems that will provide some improvements for our students, and ultimately, our student results policies. So you can see on the screen, our systems are on the left-hand side, that were prioritized, of things that we want to focus on. And the recommendations, as I've mentioned before, social, developing a social justice curriculum, anti-racist pedagogy, addressing the fear with teachers, administrators, and district leaders are some of the issues that we're going to tackle as we're moving forward in our strategic planning process. So this sets the framework for the next five years of our work. So we are working through a process of strategic planning for one year right now, that we're just finishing up, that will be setting our action plans as we're moving forward. We have a district leadership team that's based of teachers, teacher leaders in each building, and administrative staff, to be able to lead that work. That'll be occurring on a monthly basis, and, and we'll, we'll be really focused on making sure that when we're sitting at this table or standing at the podium in 2025, we're able to look back on the development that we've been able to make on each one of these areas as we're moving forward. So so wanted to be able to share that as an important part of last year, as we would transition that into, into this coming year. But certainly, the school reopening is heavy on everyone's mind across the country, so I wanted to touch a little bit, touch base a little bit on that on tonight. So our reopening for 2020-2021 actually began the last day of school last year. So on June, June 11th, we held our first school reopening work group, to where we had over 50 members of the community participate with us to be, to begin to think through what we want to, how we, what learning models we want to be able to use, not only as we open school this coming year, but as we're moving throughout the year. So we took a look at really two different areas. So one was health and safety, as a priority of health and safety of our students and staff. And the other was high-quality instruction. So we went through a lot, a lot of work, and basically, two months' worth of, of meetings, as we were able to develop what we're calling a virtual plus learning model. And the virtual plus learning model is the model that will be starting the school year in on September 8th. So that model is a evolution of our emergency learning from the end of last year. And as we're working again to make sure that we have the health and safety of our students and staff on top of mind, but also making sure that we're providing high-quality instruction, we knew that we needed to evolve from that emergency, emergency learning. So some differences that we'll see as the school year kicks off is, one, we'll have many more synchronous opportunities. So basically, live classes that will be provided by the teachers and the students, but it'll be done virtually. The plus side also means that we'll also have some small group interventions and some opportunities for students to meet face-to-face with staff, something that we weren't able to do during the safer-at-home time at the, in the spring of last year. So that plus model is gonna allow us an opportunity to have a little bit more engagement, and I would say, as, as the governor had said early in the year, kind of turn the dial to make sure that we're keeping health and safety at the top of our minds, but also ratcheting things up in our interaction as we move forward into eventually getting to what we hope to be a hybrid model, where we'd have about half of our students back, and then a full face-to-face model at some time throughout this year. The speed of that really is at the, we're at the mercy of the prevalence of the virus in Shorewood and in the surrounding area. And we'll be working very closely with the North Shore Health Department to have gating criteria as we're moving forward. So right now, we will be starting the school year in a virtual plus learning model, and that'll be through the first quarter. The end of our first quarter is November 6th, so on November, so November 9th is our first day of the second quarter. So that may be the first time that we would move out of the virtual plus learning model. We will be doing evaluations both in September and October, to, again, monitor the prevalence of the virus and make a recommendation then to the school board in October on how we want to be able to move forward in that second, in that second quarter. So we're also gonna learn a lot from our peer districts, many of whom are starting in a hybrid model or starting full face-to-face. And we'll be able to, to use those lessons that they learn to be able to help us make the best decisions that we can, again, having health and safety at the top of mind for, for all of our community, specifically in the school context for our students and students and staff. Also wanted to just quickly address the facilities referendum. So back in, in April of 2019, so we passed a $65 million referendum. So that construct, the bidding process and the construction work has happened over the last and, and the construction work has been in full force over this, this summer. If you remember back, for our facilities referendum, we had four priorities that we were looking at in, in identifying what projects we would do. Safety, our interior, accessibility, our capital maintenance, and my, our all of that done with the trickiness of having very beautiful, but old buildings, and to be able to preserve those, but also modernize them for our current needs. So I wanted to just have pictures from over the summer that I think are unique and also reflective of the work that we're continuing to do. One of the, the really pleasant surprises for this school year, or this the construction projects over the summer was so we had an opportunity to do some renovation, and it needed to be spruced up, and, and needed some work done in the Atwater Gymnasium. So part of that work was taking a look at ceiling tiles, and then identifying that there was a false ceiling that was pretty low in the building, and if you can look at the, if you're looking at the picture, you can see the difference in paint lines of where, where the false ceiling. So above that false ceiling actually was this beautiful architecture with the column, heads of the columns here. And that actually was the original auditorium for the district. So the Atwater Gym, prior to being a gymnasium, was an auditorium back in 1915, when it was built. And so part of our restoration of the historic nature of our buildings is to be able to uncover some of the, of its characteristics in some of our buildings. So, so that's something that, that's a project that is in motion, that should be completed, will be completed this fall. And then also, to, to just point out, and this is happening at both of our elementary schools, the ADA accessibility. Because I do think that as we're doing some of these projects, and although my glamorous world, pressing an accessibility is culture and the value of all of us. Just put in at Atwater Elementary. Again, to the elementary schools, I do any of our we found some, some changes that needed to be made, so a little bit behind schedule on opening those offices, but they'll be open here in the, in the fall. But what I wanted to point out is the fact that and it's a relatively simple picture, provides, I think, something significant. So what this means is that all all our citizens from our Atwater Elementary School. The building was built in 1915, and from 15 to 20, not every day has been able to use that front door. And I think the work that's being done our community will address that need. And that's when we're talking about access, that's a really important marker for us to identify the progress that we're in the project throughout the district. So I wanted to be able to highlight that, highlight that tonight. And finally, for our wanted to just with just a in Africa, and I just think of the tribe being with each other. Do you like? I remember that, I was like side tribe, yeah, the greeting is in the first Cassarian and a gay. How are the children? We're about to embark on the most unique year of public education. My challenge to myself and to our community is that as we're working through this, engage each other throughout the school year. From the Masai tribe, and as we're engaging, engaging each other as how the children, with the priority being on students, make sure that the decisions that we make standpoint, the decisions that were made in our programming standpoint, that that is top of mind. And how the children. So with that, I want to introduce our new interim, interim business director, who's on his 40th annual meeting, which is the most unique
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Welcome. You need some exciting things, yeah, numbers. You're like, no, I can present. The budget is financial plan for delivery of drugs to children. Dr. Davis alluded, children are the important part. Where they come from. To go through each of these, and as you look at there are stories that affect children behind every one of those. I've been fortunate to be able to contribute to education from this side of the table for 40 years. I actually started out as a teacher. After the first year and a half of teaching, I thought that children be much better served if I managed to stand in front of them. Utmost respect to what teachers do, and how hard that job is. Quickly, we're just going to build a budget. This, these are the steps. How many kids are we gonna have to educate? Be responsible for? How much money are we gonna have to do? It's gonna come in for us to do that job, and how are we gonna spend the money? We'll end the meeting with an opportunity for public comment. This is a budget. All board members are present, so they can hear from you. Any thoughts that you have on the budget? Okay, for those of you at home, I'm saying you're having a little technical difficulty. Take a short break, we should bring the things up pretty smoothly again.
Not you.
Not you.
All right, we're going to try it again here. Just real quick, Jack, you good? Okay. All right, I think we are good. Yeah, you can see Jack's presentation, good? All right. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Mickey. If there's anything we've learned during this COVID situation pandemic is how reliant we are in technology and how important it's going to be for us going forward. In any given year, due to the way the state of Wisconsin does their school regulate, or funding regulations, at this time of the year, there are a number of uncertainties. We aren't sure exactly what enrollment is going to be, we aren't sure exactly what the state aid is going to be, which means we aren't exactly sure what the property tax levy will be, we're not sure if there's going to be any changes in state federal regulations. Over this course of my several years in this business, I've learned how to operate though, make reasonable projections, decide which federal state proposal is going to probably make it, which one's not, but this year is very uncertain. We still aren't quite sure the impact of the pandemic, of the shutdowns, if we're going to have additional shutdowns. We don't know if more parents than we are expecting will choose an alternative enrollment option, homeschooling, private school. We don't know if we are going to be changes, updates, additional suggestions coming from CDC or the state to make sure that we have all the proper protection strategies in place to prevent those things, and what will be the impact of that on our resources. We have to discover how to be better at our new instructional delivery methods, and we don't know to what extent we may have to expand that, to what extent we can be able to shrink it, and what. We do know that the pandemic, pandemic has had a certain harsh fiscal impact on local, state, and federal budgets. We rely on the state, a significant portion of our funds. We don't know if the state is going to make adjustments later in the year that will have an impact on our resources. And impact, the pandemic has a very significant impact on the overall economy, and what kind of an effect will that have on the ability of families to participate in curriculums, on the ability of families to pay their property taxes, to pay their rent. So all of these things have an impact on the school district, and these are just some additional uncertainties we have to deal with. So the budget that we're presenting this evening is a preliminary budget. The school board will adopt the budget for the year in October, when they set the property tax levy. That's, and we're accounting words, we call that the original budget. So right now, it's a preliminary budget, and we know that some things will change. First thing we do in the process of determining what the budget needs to look like, we project what our enrollment going to, is going to be. Enrollment is the basis for our costs, tells us how many classrooms we have to have, how much staff we have to have, how much materials we have to have, how many people are going to be served in our instructional, educational programs or community service programs. We are projecting at this time, a slight increase in enrollment for next year, from 1942 to 1959. So we think the enrollment's going to go up a little bit, as of now. The numbers I'm giving you are the numbers that we have in our student information system as of the date that I finalized this last week. Now, it's quite possible between now and the time the doors open, that we could have more families elect to send their schools to a private school, more families may elect to do homeschooling. It's possible that some of those that had families in homeschooling last year, or a private school last year, may come because they liked the way that we were open. These are the uncertainties, we try to monitor them on a day-to-day basis, and we make, we'll make adjustments as we can. Then we have a concept called membership. Membership is a way that the state of Wisconsin takes the enrollment and decides who's responsible for educating those, who gets the money for the education of those children. So membership first, it only counts our resident students, not the non-resident students. But it also counts our resident students that go someplace to another public school. It does not count our resident students that go to a private school. So you see, you have all these little concepts, and then there's two different membership numbers, there's a membership number for revenue limit purposes, there's a membership number for state aid purposes, they're different numbers. The key for us, as for the budget, is that the membership number that's used for revenue limit purposes is based on a rolling three-year average. So if we have a spike in enrollment, we only get to count one-third of those as new kids. If we have a drop in enrollment, we only get penalized for one-third of those kids in the first year, two-thirds in the second year, three-thirds in the third year. So it's a number that fluctuates. The intent of that fluctuation is to protect school districts. When they have a drop, they don't suffer all of the loss of revenue in one else. The disadvantage, if you happen to be a rapidly growing school district here, don't get all the revenue that you need to support all the children. So there's two concepts, enrollment, basis for cost, membership, the basis for our revenue When we presented, put this budget together, these are some of the big assumptions that we're making. We're assuming the revenue limit increase would be $0 per pupil. Now, right now in the statutes, it says it's going to be $179. But pending the legislature going back into action and making a budget repair, adopting a budget repair bill, they could change it, so we are taking a conservative approach. We assume general state aid will decrease by over half a million dollars. This has been pretty consistent from year to year, over the last few years for the school district. Now, there's a, if you go on the DPI website, say, what's the Department of Public Instruction's July estimate for state aid to the school district shows a great big increase. I've been doing this quite a few years, and I've never seen that number be accurate. So I use a number that, based on my history, is going to change, will not be exactly that number, but will be someplace between there and the, the large increases I projected. We think that there will be a decrease in the number of students that will come to Shorewood High School, or excuse me, Shorewood School District, from another school district. We are conservatively saying that our various miscellaneous revenues, things like fees, things like investment income, things like payments, the rebates from insurance companies, those things, all collectively will go down $77,000. But we will be more aggressive in the use of our grants, and so we're showing that revenue will go up 255. Now, it sounds like a great thing, but grants are specific to the reason you get the grant, so we can't use any of that $255,000 to help a child who doesn't meet the conditions of that grant. But we will be more aggressive pursuing and using those dollars that are available to So in all, you look at, this is kind of how the budget shapes up, property taxes contribute 66% of our budget, state aid about 25%, federal one, and the other. State aid and property taxes are the two big things, so I want to take a minute to look at those. This is the required publication of what a property tax will look like. I do want to point out that these numbers are not the same as the ones that were in the newspaper, subsequent to the publication that went in the newspaper, we've learned more, learned additional things, and so we continuously update, and we'll continuously update to the board, adopt the budget in October. But at this point in time, based on what we know, based on the assumptions I gave you, we are looking at a 1.9% increase in the property tax levy, the equalized property tax rate of $14.13, so up about six cents from the year that we're just coming out of. There's a 10-year history of your property tax levy, I see the board worked very hard to have a very flat equalized mill rate for multiple years, and then last couple of years, you had a referendum approval, you had a approval of an increase in your revenue limit authority, so those had an impact on the mill rate. I did want to kind of show what happened to state aid. State aid is in three major categories of general aid, per pupil aid, both of those are considered general purpose revenue, we can use them wherever we need to use them. Categorical aid is specific to the category, you have to do something to get the money. We have to have, operate libraries to get library aid, we have to provide specialized services to students that qualify to get special education aid. Those, that's what categorical aid is, very specific, very tight, so that money, we can't move from one place to another, it's got to be spent on the category for which it is So that's the revenue piece, property taxes, state aid being the two large ones. Budget assumptions on expenditures, no general increase in employee compensation, if they're on a salary schedule, they'll move through the salary schedule with no general increase at this point in time, some reduction of staff. We think that we are going to have to pay additional unemployment compensation due to various changes in the way that we're employing people, because of COVID, we can't keep everybody employed full. But throughout the different offices, particularly at the district level, we've reduced office expenses significantly. And prior to my coming here, the previous administration did put together, put in place some things to save money on a health insurance program and to reduce costs for copiers and printers, so those are the kinds of things that hovered upon us to continue to manage so that we can, savings in places that stay as far away from the classroom as possible. It doesn't mean we won't ever affect the classroom, but we want to look every place else first. School funding is based on a set of funds, and so if you take our expenditure and you look at it, the general fund is the largest one, that's things that aren't regulated, special projects are like special education fund. Then we have to pay debt service, we have a robust community service program, and then the food service is a relatively small program. Happy to report that last year is self-funding, actually made a few thousand dollars on it, hopefully that'll take care of any deficits in the future, or maybe we'll start to replace furniture or equipment if we need to, so. But it's only 1% of the overall, so it doesn't give us any flexibility. The general fund being the largest, we take another look at that, and say, okay, in the general fund, where are we spending the money? Instruction, 55%. Support services should show up there. If I could do my math at the top of my head, I would tell you, that's the difference between 55, 12, minus 100. So you got, what, 77, so it becomes 23% in self-support services. Non-program, what this really is, is it means that we are paying another district to educate our children, so it's called non-program class, the other school district, they'll call it instruction or support services. The budget was built on what I call the conservative principles. We're cautious, we're careful on using any, when we're estimating our revenues. I gave the example that the state budget bill that was passed two years ago said we can increase our revenue by $179 a person, we used zero. But on the other side of it, if we know that we have, expect an increase in expenditures or a decrease in expenditures, we take the full impact of that. Then we work as hard as we can throughout the year to outperform that budget. We try to get our revenues increased as much as we can, and we try to save on the spending side as much as we can. But like the uncertainty I told you before, we do have some pretty big unknowns. We don't know if we're going to have, if we'll have additional costs for health room aids. It's an area that school districts used to commonly have, those, they went away, started bringing them back during the COVID, during the, this period, it may be something we need to look at carefully. We don't know if we're going to need additional support for mental, mental health. We're examining those carefully, and we'll make adjustments as necessary. The substitute teacher costs, we can have, we had nice savings last year in that bucket because we're working in school. So what are we going to need this year? How quickly do we come back to school? Will that have some kind of an impact on the teacher absences? You've all heard the CDC is concerned that we've got the, we haven't solved the COVID problem, and now the flu season's coming upon us. Will that have an impact on our ability for, for our teachers? So these are the kinds of things that we have to continue continually monitor between now and the time the Board of Education passes the budget in October, and even after that. So this uncertainty tells us we have the actual versus projected enrollment, there can be some changes. There could be a budget repair bill, could affect the revenue limit, could affect the general purpose revenue. My concern, as I advise the board and superintendent, is the timing. Once school starts, we know how many teachers we have, they're all under contract. We've got contracts issued for most of the things, we still have to heat the buildings, we still have to do all of those things. So we have very few dollars that we can move or save after school starts. But if the legislature decides they're going to reduce one of our major aids in January, that means we, we could potentially have a shortfall to meet our needs. So again, this has never happened to, well, actually, I'll take that back, it did happen to me when Patrick Lucy was governor, after the budgets were passed, they did a big cut and stayed eight, 4%. So these kinds of things do cause headaches and cause problems. It could result in the financial position of the district, that is, their fund balance dropping somewhat. We're going to do, we're going to continue to monitor what's going on, we have a governor that used to be the state superintendent, so hopefully his interest is still in education and protect us to the degree we can. And then, we don't know how much federal assistance there will be to the states, if any, and whether that will mitigate the state needing to have a budget repair bill that takes money away from us. If you have questions, feel free to call me, send me an email, much better, easier to get ahold of me by email, it will tell you right away, because I'm not, I'm not working full-time, but there's my contact information. So at this time, I had asked Dr. Davis to come up and join me. As I said, the Board of Education is here to, is all present to hear your comments, and so if you have comments, questions, we'll do the best we can to. And so if you have comments, questions, we'll do the best we can to answer them. Questions from the in-house audience first? Any questions from the in-house audience? I'll repeat the question for everybody in the home. The question is in regard to the projection for enrollment. Between the 2019 year and 2020 year, there's a drop. And then the projection is it's going to increase slowly. The enrollment projections are based on two major factors. One is what we call cohort survival. If you're familiar with statistics at all, it just basically says we look backwards to make an estimate as what's going to happen going forward. That number then is adjusted for birth rates. So if there's a significant change in birth rates five years ago, we'll factor that into the enrollment projection. So I didn't do these enrollment projections, but they come from a firm that's called PMA or Five Forecast. And they do this all for the state. But you're making a very good point. Why I said it's a very uncertain number. And that's why we have to watch it very carefully also. Are there other questions from the House?
Yeah, I can take that. So the question was, what are the numbers that are going to look at us restarting school in the second quarter? As I mentioned, we're starting in a virtual plus environment. And so we're working closely with the North Shore Health Department. So right now, the gating criteria that we're looking at is a seven-day average of percent positive. And we're looking at a trend over a period of time from late July. And we have a trend line for 14 days on what the seven-day percent positive was in late July. We'll be comparing that to a week, I believe it's the third week in October, and looking for a statistically significant reduction in that percent positive of the seven-day average. So essentially, that's one of the ways that we're going to monitor the prevalence of the virus. Shorewood, yeah. So we're able to work with the North Shore Health Department. They're able to drill down specifically in Shorewood. Yeah, so that's where the number's coming from. Now, we also have some indicators that are being evolved through the North Shore Health Department, looking at like case burden rate. That's coming up. That's a more popular indicator now. And again, it's a pretty evolving process as we're moving forward. Beyond the virus, we're also looking at our ability of our staff to come back, to make sure that we'd have the staff capacity to be able to come back. So we're monitoring where staff is at related to the virus and the ability for them to come back. So there'll be multiple indicators as we're moving forward. But the North Shore Health Department has been a great partner in collaborating and will continue to be.
So as noted in the packet, the current statute helps for an increase in the per pupil aid, raising our revenue limit. So can you talk more about the rationale for not levying up to the statutory revenue limit and instead building in the $0 assumption? Why would we not just up to do what?
So the question is, why are we using an assumption under the revenue increase of $0 per pupil when the statutes are allowing for $179 increase? And that comes back to that conservative principle. We know that the state is having significant financial problems. We are fully expecting the state legislature to go back into session to do a budget repair bill. We monitor this regularly through the professional associations have tight connections with what's going on in Madison. We don't know if that budget repair bill will be taken up before the Board assesses a tax levy or if it'll be taken up afterwards. If it's taken up before, we're pretty sure they will affect the revenue limit number. So if they don't go all the way down to zero, then we have a little bit of a cushion. My concern is we're going to take it up afterwards. So I mean, the conservative principle, if they have not made a change to the number before you have to set the tax levy, we will come back to you and we'll use that $179. But we will go into the categorical aids and be more conservative with categorical aids because that's where they'll have to balance their budget. Does that make sense? So right now, what it really amounts to is which bucket is the money in? It doesn't matter. So right now, we just made it this bucket. If as we move down the road, we see there's going to be another bucket, then we will make that modification. But the total dollars are not going to be materially different based on everything that we know from our monitoring of what's going on at the state level. Are there questions from online, virtual?
Yes, I have a question.
Just one second, please. Okay, back to the virtual question, please.
Yes, I have a question. If the school board recommends a 1.9 levy increase, but then decides it wants to increase to the 3.9 later, can it do that?
It cannot.
You repeat the question.
I'm sorry, the question is, we have in the preliminary budget an increase in the property tax levy of 1.9%. The question is, can the board on its own action increase that number beyond 1.9? And the question is yes and no. And the answer is yes and no. The state funding formulas, it's called revenue limit, will dictate the maximum levy the school board can ask for. So we calculate that number based off that revenue limit membership and say, okay, here's the total amount of money we're allowed to have. We have to subtract state aid from that number. Whatever is left over is the maximum property tax levy the school board can set. Will it be 1.9? I don't think so. Will it be 3.9? I'm almost positive it will be 3.9. So it'll be someplace around the 1.9, maybe slightly higher if state aid is lower or if the $179 is put back into the formula.
Because my question is, if, given that answer, it's significant if the board goes with the 1.9 and it's significant in how it's able to levy in future years. And so it is an incredibly important issue whether to go with that lower number or not because you're basically limiting levying ability going forward, correct?
Actually, Miguel, that used to be correct. I'm sorry.
Yeah, just repeat the question.
The question is that if the school board does not take advantage of its full levy authority this year, will that have an impact on the school district in future years? And under the old revenue limit rules, it did. Under the new revenue limit rules, the board is given a one-year chance to catch up. So, but if they don't at that time, then we lose that flexibility at least on the current rules.
Okay, understood, but that's a small window, to be sure.
Hello, I have several questions. First, it sort of piggybacks off of Miguel's question. Miguel's question was about why we're currently choosing the 1.79 versus the 1.9 versus the 3.9, which we can choose. And based on all the instances that you were talking about, it sounds like you're expecting there to be aid cut from the legislature. I mean, you're more or less saying we can expect that, even with a friendly education governor, that we can expect that. So I guess my question is, why wouldn't we choose the 3.9% levy with that expectation? I know there's a cap and I understand that there's a chance that there won't be cuts. But why would we shortchange ourselves upfront?
Can you repeat that?
Okay, the question is, why are we not maximizing the property tax levy upfront at this point in time? And again, if that wasn't clear enough on your question, please jump in and let me know you want me to be more specific.
I would like you to give the rest of the people the specifics of my question because my question was more nuanced of why we weren't only choosing the 3.9. You know, it included the prediction for the cut that we're expecting from state aid.
Were you in the microphone there? Were we able to hear that? Let me be clear, though, that there is no 3.9 that we're allowed to levy. What the board is allowed to levy is based on the revenue limit formula. Revenue limit formula takes into consideration three factors. How much did the school district have in the revenue limit on a per pupil basis last year? How much of an increase are they allowed to have for the next year? And how much state aid will they receive? Those three factors, the only known factor of those three factors is what was the revenue limit on a per pupil basis last year? Right now, as I indicated to another question, we are using this assumption that someplace along the line, the legislature is going to reduce our aid or our ability to raise money to pay expenses. I can assure you that I will recommend to the school board, when they have to set the levy in October, that they set the levy to the highest that they can for exactly the reasons that Mr. Salas indicated, that if you don't do it, you're on a slippery slope. Then it's up to the board to decide where they're going to go with it. But even if we can levy to the, let's just say it was 3.9, then we still have to look at the other resources we have. We categorize aids, the per pupil aid. And are we still expecting to receive the full amount of those aids? Because even if we taxed to the max, if you will, but we don't have other resources, we still don't have the flexibility we'd like to have. We're hoping that we can raise the revenue limit by $179 and that there'll be a minimal, if any, decrease in our categorical aids at a later date. But building a financial plan and hope is not, I cannot in good conscience say, well, board, do this because we can hope it works out. We'll have to make educated guesses. Give the Board of Education the benefit of my experience, Dr. Davis's connections and the people he talks with and his experience. And the board will make a decision in October. Any other questions either from the House or virtual?
Thank you.
Okay, moving to motion to reconvene the annual meeting. I will need a motion by someone either in the audience or online. Farcor and Martians, could I get a second? Hillary DuPois is seconding that the motion carries. Oh, right, I'm a little rusty. Could I get all those in favor? On mine?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On mine? The motion carries. We are now moving to motion to approve resolution to create a capital expansion fund. The resolution reads, be it resolved by the electors of the Shored's Public District that a capital expansion fund is hereby created pursuant to Section 120.10, parenthetically, 10m of the supporting fractures for the purpose of financing remodeling, maintenance, repair, and improvement projects of various district buildings and sites. And we will further resolve that a tax in the amount of $275,000 be levied for the 2019-20 school year to be deposited in the capital expansion fund created above to be used only for the purposes specified above. Can I get a motion either online or in the audience? Harusha, can I get a second online or in-house? Is that Sam? Sam Quoman, second. Sam, I'm sorry. Hillary DuPois is our second. All those in favor in-house? All those in favor online? Any opposed in-house or online? The motion carries. Motion to approve property tax levy for the 2021 school year. The tax resolution reads, be it resolved by the 2020 annual meeting, School District of Shorewood, Milwaukee County, Wisconsin, that there is hereby levied upon all taxable property of said school district a tax in the amount of $22,842, including $275,000 for a capital expansion fund to provide for operation and maintenance of said school district. Can I get a motion from in-house or online?
I saw move. Sarah McEnany.
Sarah McEnany, can I get a second in-house or online? Toshita, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, I have a question for you. Is it appropriate to have discussion or amendments at this time?
I'll defer to Dr. Davis on that. Yes.
Then I would like to move that we amend motion 11 to change the amount of the tax levy to the previously published amount of 23,272,646, so $23,272,646 cited on page 14 of the annual meeting packet. And the reasoning, I'll be brief because Mr. Dixon did a good job of explaining all this. The issue is that, yes, there's uncertainty, but it works both ways. We have uncertainty on what our expenses could be. And we do not know that we are not going to get the not going to get the 179 per pupil aid. And so we need to make it clear that that's something we want to count on and fight with the state. So that's my amendment.
Jed McIntosh, seconds. Take a vote on the amendment. All in favor of the vote?
He said, "Dinner."
I will restate the tax resolution, or the amendment?
As an amendment.
So the amendment to the tax resolution is to change the aforementioned number to the following number, which is 23,272,646.
From the previous?
From...
From the 22,846?
So do I need a motion for that? We have an motion and a second, and so now we will vote, unless there's further discussion. Yes.
So what are the deficit implications if we do not receive the increase from the state for our school budget and for staffing?
I believe the question is, what is the implication in making that change? From a practical point of view, the implication is to send a message to the Board of Education, that the people that are participating in the annual meeting want the board to be sure to levy to the, to the highest level they can. The reason I say from a practical point of view, the board still, when they set the levy in October, cannot go beyond whatever amount comes through on the revenue limit calculation. If the revenue limit calculation comes to an amount between those two, the board could only go to the amount of the revenue limit. The revenue limit calculation comes below the 22,840, that's the highest they can go. The revenue limit comes above the 23,272, the board has the authority to go above.
Is there any further discussion? Either in-house or online? Then I will ask all in favor for the amendment to the tax resolution? Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, in-house or online? The motion carries. So vote on the original motion with the amendment?
With that amendment.
Very good. We will vote on the original resolution with the amendment. Again, all of those in favor, in-house and online?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, in-house or online? The motion carries. Motion to approve salaries of board members. Electors fix the salaries of the school board members and authorize one family fitness club membership per school board member. Present salary is $1,000 per annum for board members and $1,300 for the president. Can I get a motion, either online or in-house? I make a motion.
I so moved.
Amy Miller, can I get a second?
I second.
Miguel Salas. All those in favor of approving salaries of board members?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, in-house or online? The motion carries. Motion to approve reimbursement of board member expenses. Electors may authorize the payment of an actual and necessary expenses of a school board member. Presently, the approval is for a maximum of $3,000 per person when traveling in the performance of duties. Can I get a motion, in-house or online?
So moved.
Mike Halloran? Is that Miguel Salas?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I get a second, in-house or online?
Mike Halloran, second.
Mike Halloran, second. The motion, we're going to take a vote. All those in favor, in-house or online?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, online or in-house? The motion carries. Motion to authorize the board to establish the date for the 2020 annual meeting. This motion will allow the board to set the annual meeting date within the parameters established between section 120.08 parenthetically 1, Wisconsin statutes, which requires the annual meeting to be held between May 15th and October 31st. Can I get a motion, in-house or online?
So moved. Amy Miller?
Amy Miller, can I get a second, online or in-house?
Jed McIntosh, second.
We need to do an amendment? We are going to set the date, we're, there's an amendment to change...
Yeah, the 2021.
To change the date for the 2021 annual meeting, not the 2020 meeting. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Amy Miller?
I can just, is there any opposition on the moment in-house? The change is adopted, and so now we can take our vote. We'll vote. Any, all those in favor, online and in-house?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, online or in-house? Motion carries. Motion to authorize the school district to sell or dispose of unneeded personal property. Could I get a motion?
I so moved.
Sarah McEnany, want a second? Hillary DuBois, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. And I can move to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for joining us.